I had a friend that did graduate. Years ago, back in, I guess I was there. Lost it on the river and somebody in another inner tube brought it back to me. So I was walking into, it was here, I think it was in Auburn. I walked into, it was lobby of a hotel for some reason. I think it was at, might have been the State College at Penn State. And there was somebody at the bar. Holded me because I had an angle. And so I walked in. He was a walk my guy.
It's five. It's five o'clock.
Okay, five o'clock somewhere. And it is time to call the meeting to order. I want to welcome those in attendance and those watching through the streaming media that we have provided. Appreciate your interest in things that go on in your community and, and the work of the Planning Commission. Before we have roll call, I want to recognize two new members to the Planning Commission. We have Dana Camp on this end.
Thank you.
And David Wisdom on this end.
Thank you.
Are new to our body and we welcome them and look forward to working with them. And we'll have a roll call, please.
Dana Camp.
Here.
Nonette Reese. Robin Bridges. Warren McCord.
Here.
Bob Rittenbach.
Here.
Wendy Birmingham. David Wisdom.
Here.
Joseph H. Strip.
Here.
Janice Agar.
Here.
On every meeting, official meeting, we have a slide on the agenda right at the beginning of the agenda called Citizens Communication. This is an opportunity for those in the audience that may wish to direct a question or raise an issue with the Planning Commission that does not relate to any other item on the agenda. We will have appropriate time to discuss those as they come up on the agenda. But if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and raise any issue or ask any questions to the Planning Commission, this is the opportunity to do so now. Are you, no, this does not, it appears there are not, there is not anyone. So we will move on with the, the next item. Before we do, I want to announce to anyone here that might be here for that particular one. Item number 12 on the agenda, which is Big Dan's Car Wash, has been withdrawn and it was at the request of the applicant. So if you're here regarding that one, that will not be discussed tonight because that one has been withdrawn. One, for those who may not be familiar with the process that we use at our meetings, and I think if you do understand it, it'll help you interact with it. Every agenda item, each agenda item that you see on our agenda will be presented, have a presentation by the staff. Following that, the, the applicant has an opportunity to make any further clarification or further comments related to his or her proposal on the agenda. And if it's applicable, and many times it is applicable and required by law, a public hearing will be held on that agenda item. And then the public hearing, of course, is an opportunity for anyone to speak as they see fit. We want to hear from anybody that has anything to say regarding that agenda item. However, we will ask you to keep your comments to five minutes and make your comments relevant to that particular item of the agenda. After the hearing is closed, any questions or issues brought up during the hearing will be an opportunity for them to, the plant, the board to ask the applicant to respond to those that are brought up in the hearing. And following then the input, following this input, input from the city staff, the public, any correspondence that's been made part of the public record, the commission will deliberate and act on that proposal. Commissioner's votes will be based on federal, state, and local laws, case law, the city's comprehensive and strategic plans to include its land use plan, and input and data received. And we do receive a good bit of correspondence and we invite that correspondence and we do read each and every one of those. Best practices and accepted planning principles onsite and offsite, impacts of the overall public safety, health, and welfare. Now, in zoning matters, the City Council has the final authority and we are advisory to the City Council. So any zoning matter, once acted on by the Planning Commission here tonight, will be forwarded on with our recommendation to the City Council. However, subdivisions, the subdivision of land, by legislation is the primary responsibility of the Planning Commission. We have the final approval authority for the subdivision. However, it is a very technical process. We are required to develop subdivision regulations, which we have, and we keep updated as needs require. And when we review a subdivision plat, we are making sure that that subdivision plat meets the requirements and the technical specifications of our, of our subdivision regulations, as well as any compliance to our zoning and other laws. So it is primarily a technical review and we have authority primarily limited to make sure that the subdivisions meet or exceed the requirements of our regulations. With that being said, let us start with our consent agenda. Steph, you want to make any presentation on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, the only comment I'd make is that the minutes that you would be approving tonight under consent would be the revised minutes that were emailed out to you yesterday.
That's right. There were a few, few things that made minor changes in those minutes you received, but you have received the minutes of today or yesterday. So our consent agenda includes the, are you going to cover the annexations and the other items? No, you've got them before you, there are four, three items plus the minutes of the packet meeting on July 11th and the regular meeting on July 14th. Is any, does anyone want to remove any of those items from, from the consent agenda so that they can be further discussed? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Our next item of business is the, oh. Is the Christine Chase and Betty Rice subdivision, I believe? Yes.
Hello, this is for a preliminary plat for a five lot subdivision in the planning jurisdiction. It is located on Lee Road 400. It is currently 33 acres to be divided into five lots. All of these lots are four acres or more. As you can see, it's, it's quite far from city limits, almost out of the planning jurisdiction, but just within. And here are those five lots. Within that subdivision, there are two existing, they won't be in the subdivision, but they, you can see the way they are numbered. Staff recommends approval with conditions. There are four conditions from Lee County Engineering, two from our GIS department, one from our Water Resource Management, and four from planning. These are all notational and would just apply to putting different notes or adding different things to the preliminary and final plat. We did receive two comments from citizens. Both of them asked if these were single family or anything like that. We do not have that answer and I also, we don't have that jurisdiction either. And then there was one request from one citizen who lives, the dot's not working, but she lives on the west side and she just would like to know if the west side. And she would just like to keep some of the tree line there, some that exist. That's all she asked of the applicant, and so I promise I would relay that to her. And that is it for the preliminary plat.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions, Steph, right now? If not, then this requires a public hearing and we'll open that public hearing now. If there's anyone here that wishes to ask questions or make any comments regarding this proposal, please come forward and sign in and, no one? Well, then I'll close the public hearing. And is there any discussion among the, Sam, is there anyone prepared for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve PC case PP 2022-017 with all staff comments.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
This is the final plat for the preliminary, with the preliminary plat that was just approved. There are no additional comments. It is the same as the preliminary and the same conditions for approval as well.
This does not require a public hearing and I might comment for those who may not be familiar with the process. Nor, the plat approval consists of two steps. One is the preliminary plat is brought in and examined and approved. If however, between the time that the plat is presented, they run it and they get involved in developing the subdivision, certain problems arise, then they have to revise the plat. In this case, this is a very simple subdivision and therefore, we're going to entertain the final plat at the same night that we approve the preliminary. So there's no public hearing required, we've already had that. Is anyone prepared to?
I'll move to approve FP 2022-013, final plat.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Next item. Stables, who's presenting that?
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a first of three requests on your agenda associated with this property. The first request is to annex approximately 146.6 acres into the city limits. The property is located on the far west side of town, south of Highway 14 and in between Wimberly Road and Willis Turk Road. The property is largely undeveloped, but it does have an equestrian center on the west side. As you can see, the property is contiguous to the city limits on the east. Right here. The property is contiguous to the city limits and is within the optimal growth boundary. Therefore, it satisfies the requirements for eligibility for annexation and staff recommends approval. The property owners are represented by TJ Johnson of Holland Homes LLC and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay, this is, there's not a public hearing regarding this annexation. Is there any discussion that the proposal? Well, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve Ax 2022-012.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of that motion, then say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the motion carries.
The second request for the stables tonight is for a pre-zoning of approximately 154.2 acres and they're wishing to rezone from rural to limited development district. Logan did a good job explaining the properties. It's got an equestrian center up here to the north, Mobile Home Park. We've got some, the area is rural in nature with medium to large size lots. The proxy map showing the existing city limits around the property. To the east is going to be Wimberly Estates. To the north, right under, or just south of Highway 14, Wimberly Station. And then further to the west is Brookhaven Farms. The future land use designation for this property is rural, which allows for one single-family dwelling unit per three acres. And applicant is requesting to rezone to LDD, which would permit five dwelling units per acre. They do have a PDD request following this that proposes 385 lots that would put them at two and a half units per acre. Staff does recommend denial of the annexation, or excuse me, the rezoning request based on the conflict with the future land use plan and taking into account the surrounding uses and existing character of the area.
Okay. Are there notes, conditions of note?
Not on the rezoning, no.
Not on the, got it.
Any more questions, Amber? Okay, this is going to require a public hearing and I shall open that public hearing now. Anybody who wishes to discuss this item on the agenda, please come forward, sign in and state your name. I don't see anyone coming forward, anyone? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and continue our discussion. Is anybody wish to discuss or?
I do have just some, one question about the future land use for the staff. I know, my understanding is when we do the future land use plan, we do some kind of impact studies based on like what we're planning to rezone those areas. So I know that that would have been done to maybe keep that area rural. Has there been any kind of impact study or anything done to see how it would affect, you know, water, sewage, fire, police, anything like that to, to do such a major rezoning?
I'm not sure who to ask.
Tim Johnson with Water Resource Management. The, the site itself is obviously well west of our existing sewer sheds. So our, our planning has not contemplated a development of this nature in this area. So in order, if this were to move forward for any reason, we would require a lot more discussion with the developer and a, and the engineer to, just to address any service, utility service primarily centered to sewer service to this area. And not only that, looking at how it would impact our, our system as a whole. And, and, and to that end, we would likely be working with them to come up with a development agreement to address any of those capacity concerns or anything along those lines that we would, we would see.
So what I'm hearing is that you have not had those discussions at this point?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions anybody want to make?
Is this Auburn water?
At Luchepoca.
Luchepoca water. And how long has it been since we have looked at optimal boundary? That was one of our questions. How long did we?
The last.
I know that we put a different pause on it.
Yeah, the, the last time was 2018, there was an update. We are in the process of doing a more complete update next fiscal year. So that includes an update to the growth model, which is what was used originally to determine the optimal boundary and those areas that should be designated rural. And that's all based on population projections, school capacity, fire station capacity, sewer capacity. So it's been some, some time since it's been looked at holistically. But the last time the growth boundary alone was looked at was in 2018.
How close is this to the optimal boundary, the great boundary?
It's within the optimal boundary, that's why it's eligible for annexation.
Are we pushed, how close are we pushing though to the?
It's, is there a slide for it?
It's about, the optimal boundary extends about one mile to the west.
Okay. Let me ask you, Luchepoca water, we're probably pushing close.
But the reason for their recommendation is based on the land use?
Future land use. Current, future land use.
Or future land use, yeah. Which was updated in 2018.
Yes.
I don't so much have issue with the land use plan as the complete lack of availability of water resources and our inability to accommodate a development of that size without special considerations and agreements and all of those things. If it's nowhere in the scope of our plan for the Water Works Board, then I don't see how it makes good sense to allow this at this time, fiscally speaking, or anything else.
Well, one of my questions would be, is if there was a development agreement in process that, that is not there, I understand. But what if they were able, the applicant or person was ready to entertain doing their own stuff? So then we're just up against land use. The applicant appears to be here if we want to hear from him.
Can I add something to that? If you're, speaking of the development agreement and the senators, so, so one of the things that, that we've discussed with Water Resource Management is really a concern of what could potentially happen. This, this opens up a new, what we would call sewer shed. And if you, if you rezone this, then the anticipation would be that, that it would open up other rezonings. So we would, we would want to look at this entire basin and to what it would impact it would be, not just this single development. So we want to do some wise planning, as we would normally do, and how this would come into play and how it would affect everything. And that, and as Tim was referring to, we've not had time to have those deliberations. That would, I mean, that, that's months and months of discussion.
Mr. Chairman, go over here. I was looking at the code today and, and one thing I'd mentioned to you is that for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation on a rezoning to the City Council, the code states that the Planning Commission shall not recommend the adoption of a proposed amendment unless it finds the adoption of such amendment is in the public interest, not solely for the interest of the applicant. FYI.
We're looking for the interest, the public interest. Would the, I failed to give the applicant like, like I intended to, an opportunity to, to address any of these. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate y'all's time as always. Yeah, Mr. Cummings had a great point. I, I think, you know, we don't disagree with anything staff has said about the magnitude of a request like this. And it would open up a new, a new watershed for the sewer. We have met several times and looked at sewer. We've, we've got concept feasibility studies out for both gravity and force main. I agree with Tim, they're a long way from being a, a complete design, but you know, these things happen in stages anyway, right? We don't, we don't want to go into full design before we've even entertained the Planning Commission with the ability to do something like this on, on a site like this. One thing we will say, you know, we put together a plan with 77 acres of open space that would be covenanted and restricted from any development forever. On the other half of the site, we're talking about doing 385 homes, which is two and a half units per acre. We did not come to that number magically. That is what was been approved just north of this at Wimberly Station, which is served by Auburn Sewer. Whereas that is pumped to a different watershed and we understand that would not be the case with a development like this. We have looked at taking sewer south instead. Another reason, or another reason we kind of felt like this made sense to consider at this time is the proximity to the outer loop. So that would take this side of town, west Auburn, from a very rural to on the intersection of two major arterials for the city of Auburn. And then the last thing I would say to that effect is, you know, a neighborhood of 385 homes is not a, folks are moving in that thing next year. You know, this is a nine-year project based on our development schedule. You know, this is a nine-year project based on our development schedule that we presented as part of the PDD application. So whereas there are some obstacles to overcome, we believe it's kind of time to look at what happens to this side of town with a proposed outer loop. It's significant enough that it is mentioned in the comp plan as a reason that we would relook at a comp plan. So that's kind of how we arrived at both the density and the location for this project. So we're proud of what we put together. We definitely understand there's a lot of hurdles between that and moving folks in and out there. But we do appreciate y'all's consideration. And I would also like to introduce Scott Hanson, who is one of the property owners. He'd love to speak to y'all, if that's liable, Mr. McCord.
Oh. Well, yeah, I wish he'd come in for a public hearing, but as a representative, since you used some of your time, he can come forward.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Hey, thanks for having me, Scott Hanson. I live in Auburn most of my life. The city of Auburn began planning for what we now know as Shug Jordan Parkway in the mid 50s. The western segment was completed around 1971. Driving south from North College on the new highway, the first hint of civilization was the intersection of what is now known as North Donahue. Between this intersection and Lake Martin, there was little other than farms and forests. Camden Ridge might have been among the earliest developments at the corner of Farmville Road and North Donahue. To me, it seemed like we were in the sticks when my wife and I moved in out there in 2000. I remember in the mid 80s, driving down a dirt road and a pig trail to a log cabin out in the woods to play music. I think I got my 56 Chrysler stuck in a mud hole trying to get out. We now know this path as Richland Road. From Wire Road to North College, this stretch of Shug Jordan Parkway provides access to the AU Vet School and industrial park, commercial businesses, and subdivisions. While south of Wire Road, Auburn University agricultural activities and medical facilities operate side by side. Fast forward to 2022, with Auburn growing at approximately 43% from one census to another. I've heard some say that we appear to be growing at a similar rate. Discussions of an outer loop around the west side of Auburn were referenced in the 2030 plan. And a portion of this loop is showing between Kiesel Park, the backside of Kiesel Park, and the stables now under consideration. Subdivisions like Woodland Park and Wimberly Station, in existence for at least the last 20 years by my memory, lie just to the north of us and west of the proposed outer loop. Many homes along Lee Road 57, also shown here as Willie Turk Road, are on already existing quarter acre lots, been that way for 100 years. As the crow flies, it's about one and a half miles from the silo development on Wire Road to our farm. A lot of the acreage developed since the mid 90s is on land that would have been zoned R, just like the stables. Auburn will continue to grow 20, 30, or even 40-plus percent, and we will need room for this growth. The location of the stables is well within the optimal boundaries, now shown on Auburn planning documents. It's next door to property with similar or higher dwelling units per acre. Looking forward, a drive down the outer loop will include land uses with homes on small and large lots, agricultural lots, commercial businesses, industrial parks, and easy access to I-85, just like Shug Jordan Parkway. We ask for your approval of the stables as part of planning for the growth of Auburn. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Mom, mom, like a minute or two. Jean Hanson.
Okay.
I'm Jean Hanson, and I am one of the owners of this property. And I want to thank you for allowing me to come before you and speak. My husband is a 99-year-old man, and he wants to thank you too for your consideration. We have loved this piece of land for many, many years. And my husband is a 1952 graduate of Auburn, of what was API at one time. And we've been able to live here for the last, since 1956, and have our children grow up here because of our love for Auburn. And the Grimes family moved, they have close ties to Auburn. The Grimes family, after the graduation from Auburn University, they moved away. But when it was time to come back, they wanted to come back to Auburn. We own this land jointly with them, and we look for ways that we could serve the community and give back to a community that had been so good to us. And we decided we should build a barn and board horses for others so they could come out and enjoy our land. Well, it quickly grew and grew and grew. We had no space for any more horses. We built show barns, we had horse shows. And our goal was to keep some young girls out of the mall and bars and give them the place to hang out rather than stray to these other places that they could go. We brought people into this area from Birmingham, Montgomery, Tennessee, South Carolina, Mississippi, and South Carolina. And while they were here, they were buying groceries. I mean, they stayed for weeks all summer long when the campus was virtually empty. We had people coming in this community, spending their money, and coming to our horse shows that would last back to back, two weeks in a row. And it took a lot of manpower, but we loved watching the children play, hang over the fence, walk the trails, some of them would go fish in the pond. I watched one little boy one day, just, he kept throwing sand up in the air while his sister was taking riding lessons. That gave us a lot of joy, and we would appreciate consideration. Auburn's got a lot of growing pains, and we need to provide housing for those people that come into town. I've sold real estate here in Auburn for over 40 years. I know what I'm talking about. I know when they come, they want to find a place to live. And many of them like to live a little further out. Or maybe they want to drive to Montgomery or Tallahassee to work, and then go to our schools. So I ask your favorable consideration of this project. I think it's very worthwhile. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Okay. I think we've heard from the developer, the proposers, and the landowners. We've had the public hearing and no one spoke, so is there any further discussion that we need to have on this proposal? The, I want to ask a question. What is the timetable? Now we keep talking about the outer loop. Normally, outer loops come just like Shug Jordan. There was no development on Shug Jordan when it was developed, as was indicated by Mr. Hanson. What's the timetable for this?
So currently, we don't have a timetable for construction of the outer loop. We are in the final stages of an update to the feasibility study and evaluating the project alignments. We're waiting on ALDOT to give final approval, but there's no funding in place right now to construct any of the sections. Yes, probably years, many more years.
Many years, okay. Okay, so, any other discussion?
I may be outnumbered here, but I don't mind being a yes for this so that it may push us as staff and city to look at this area a little closer in time than we might have expected. I also realize that we are growing by leaps and bounds.
Well, is that a motion?
Sure. But I move to approve-
Yeah.
The project.
Yeah, I understand what your motion was.
Okay.
All right, the motion has been made to recommend to the City Council that this rezoning be approved. Now, is there a second to that? The motion then dies for lack of a second? That's all right, it's your motion, you're right. Is there another motion anyone wishes to make?
I move to forward to City Council with a recommendation for denial, RZ 2022-007.
All right, the motion has been made to forward to Council with a recommendation of denial. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any need to discuss, anybody wish to discuss the motion?
I think the fact that this is going forward to the City Council will give the opportunity to provide that discussion that needs to be made about this. I think the infrastructure issues are really the kinds of decisions that the City Council should be making because they're the ones with the pocketbook they're making. And so, you know, for that reason, you know, I'm happy to say to the City Council, I don't mind this development, but that's, it's just not really what I think is our responsibility at this point in time.
Any other comments, discussion? Then I call for the question, all in favor of the motion. Let's have a roll call.
Robin Bridges.
Yes.
Dana Camp.
Yes.
Jana Jager.
Yes.
David Wisdom.
Yes.
Warren McFord.
Yes.
Nonna Reese.
No.
Bob Rittenbaum.
Yes.
Wendy Birmingham.
Yes.
Joseph Easter.
Yes.
All right, the motion to recommend denial is approved, which brings us to a third item on the same project. Right, yeah, the stables.
Not sure how this would work without the LDD zoning, but they have also requested to apply the planned development district designation to 154 acres. Same subject property located between Wimberly and Willis Turk Roads. Here's the future land use, we looked at this a little earlier. Majority of rural in the area, and then, let me read that, limited residential and medium master planned mixed use, I'm sorry, down to the southeast. Here's the concept plan for the development, 385 single-family lots with amenities being the large pond on the site and the equestrian center that they would make into a banquet hall of sorts. We do recommend denial of this request as well. The future land use designation being rural, one single-family home per three acres, and the LDD would permit five dwelling units an acre, which is a maximum of 770 units. That's about it. Y'all have any questions?
Thank you. This also requires a public hearing. Is there any additional things that you would like to say regarding this PDD?
Yes, sir, I'll be, just a point of clarification. We understand completely as developer, we would be responsible for the cost of that sewer infrastructure, just to make that clear for the record. There's no expected burden on the city of Auburn for our infrastructure. However, I do understand that capacity at a plant is a different conversation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I'll close the public hearing and refer to the board as to how you wish to dispense with this. It would seem that it would be difficult to approve it in the absence of the rezoning. So, but it's, we still have to send something to the City Council, so we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny RZ 2022-008.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Okay, next item is Sonic Tools.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Now, just for clarity, was that a unanimous decision on the PDD? Thank you, making sure.
Based on the previous decision?
I assume it was, but wanted to be sure.
As a matter of fact, yeah.
And these will be advertised for the September 20th, City Council.
All right, who's going to tell us about Sonic Tools?
Okay, this is another annexation request for a subject property that has multiple requests on the agenda. The subject property is located in the 2900 block range of Lee Road 10 or Beehive Road. The property owners are being represented by Matt Cobb and- The property, as I mentioned, is located on Beehive Road. It is to the west of the Auburn Technology Park West and a little bit to the east of the Briggs and Stratton facility, as well as south of the new Environmental Services property. The property is contiguous to the south with current city limits, and it is within our optimal boundary, therefore, staff recommends approval of the annexation request. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. It's 7.9 acres, if that is important, probably.
Any questions, staff? Would the, is there a representative of the petitioner present, and would they like to say something about the project? No?
I do not see him.
Okay. All right, this is annexation, there's no public hearing involved. What discussion would you like to have regarding this? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
My only question would be is if the applicant has been asked if he would be interested in annexing the entire parcel-
What parcel?
-of his property, and if there's a reason perhaps why he does not want to do that.
The applicant's representative is here, he can come forward and speak to that.
Yeah, sorry. No, I'm just curious if you had thought to perhaps annex in the entire parcel as opposed to the eight?
Yeah, my name is Matt Cobb, I appreciate you having me here. I work on behalf of AU Alliance, who owns the entire properties. They, at this point, do not have any reason or obligation to annex everything in. This is a project that was submitted for a particular use and a particular project, and I would like to just annex the particular, just this nine acres in at this point.
And is that nine acre sufficient for what they need? I mean, will, there won't be any bleed over into the part that's not being annexed in for their business?
As of right now, it's been brought to us, this particular project in this area, and we're looking for the nine acres. So we've subdivided, we've looked at everything, FARs, ISRs, all the regulations through the city of Auburn, as well as Lee County, and everything meets the standards for this nine acres, as well as the annexation portion. So I'm here, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything you have.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Will I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve AX 2022-015 with all comments.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the rezoning request regarding Sonic Tools.
Good evening. As you mentioned, this is a rezoning request for the same property. They are requesting to rezone nine acres from rural to industrial, 7.9 acres of that property pending annexation, of course. The property is along Beehive Road, and this is just a further zoomed-out photo of the area showing the city limits. Is the colored areas, the green and the purple. Green is obviously rural, and purple is industrial. It is adjacent to the west of the West Tech Park, similar proximity to Tech Park West Annex. The Briggs and Stratton building, just, there's additional commercial and industrial uses out this way. D&amp;J Enterprises is at the intersection of Beehive Road and Wire Road. And then the city's new Public Works Facility along Wire Road. The overall property is just under 45 acres. The overall property is just under 45 acres and they are proposing to rezone nine of that property. This is the exhibit showing the property. This area here is already in the city limits and this is the area that was just, that Logan presented to rezone. The, or annex, I'm sorry. The future land use in this area is rural, however, over the past few years, the area has been transitioning to more industrial projects. The tech park was constructed back in 2007, I believe, and the annex was a few years later, I think in 2015. Briggs and Stratton was developed and rezoned in 2018 and that's all the industrial property out that way. Knowing that this area is transitioning towards industrial, however, the future land use is rural, staff's recommendation is to forward to City Council with a recommendation of denial. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Can this project move forward without the annexation, if it remains in the county?
Absolutely.
And is this business currently already in the City of Auburn?
Yes, I was gonna touch on that with the conditional use, but I can go into that now if you'd like.
No, we can wait, thank you.
Okay, does the petitioner have any further to add regarding this particular aspect of his project?
No, sir, unless there's any further questions.
No question. All right, thank you. This, this does require a public hearing, which I shall open at this time. Does anyone in the audience wish to address this particular proposal? If not, I close the public hearing. And is there any discussion among the commissioners? If not, is there anyone prepared to make a motion?
I will move to forward to City Council with a recommendation of approval, the rezoning of RX 2022-009.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I would like a roll call though, please.
Robin Bridges?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
Yes.
Jana Jager?
Yes.
David Wisdom?
Yes.
Warren McCord?
No.
Nonette Reese?
Yes.
Bob Rittenbaum?
No.
Wendy Birmingham?
No.
Joseph Astra?
Yes.
Count?
Six to three.
Okay, so the motion is approved to send forward to the Council for approval. Okay, the next item is a conditional use for Sonic Tools.
That's correct. This is conditional use approval for a commercial support use, specifically a distribution warehouse facility. They are requesting to construct a 130,000 square foot building on the property we just mentioned. It would be on nine acres. They will access off of Beehive Road and the facility is here. The existing business has been in Auburn, I believe, since 2015. They are experiencing significant growth and have outgrown their current facility on North Dean Road and instead of opening up a second location, they are choosing to construct a brand-new facility and all of their product would be housed under one roof. And that is their reason for considering this new location. As with the previous case, we do recommend denial. However, we do understand that this area is transitioning towards industrial property.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions of Katie? Would the petitioner have anything further to add regarding your conditional use?
Yes, sir. I know conditional use is based on the total development and total build-out. I just want to let you know, one of the future, hopefully tenants of this property is here with me. Their 130,000 square feet is a 10-year development phasing. So, their original, their first phase of this, which is not shown and they're still going through due diligence right now, is approximately 50,000 square feet. So, 50,000 square feet gets them to the three to five year as their growth goes on. So, what we're looking at here, even though 130,000 square feet is shown, that is for conditional use of the, oh, excuse me, of the entire developed project. But that is a 10-year plan for them. So, we wanted to come in showing you the entirety of the project over the full phasing, but at this point, when plans come through DRT, it's gonna be a 50,000 square feet with three trucks a week. So, their distribution, they are distribution and warehouse, but there's not a lot of movement is what I want to get to. So, there is 130,000 there, but that is a long-term objective for the potential client here. So, upfront, we're looking at 50, maybe an expansion in three to five years of another 30 and then up to 130 if it gets to that point. But being here in front of you, planning commission and City Council, hopefully, the total build-out is what they're looking at projecting for their company as a hub here in Auburn. Once it gets past that point, they'll be looking at hubs other places. But I just want to be clear that what we're looking at is not going out there and clearing for 130,000 square feet, you know, distribution and warehouse. The first phase will be around 50,000 and we'll be working with Lee County for, you know, anything we need to be working with for roads and traffic and those sort of things.
And they are strictly distribution warehouse, there's no manufacturing?
No manufacturing, everything comes from overseas, it is distributed here and then out. But they're looking, like I said, they're looking at three trucks a week. So, their projection in their first three to five years is 90 trucks a year. So, the traffic is very minimal when you're talking about distribution and warehousing. Your first thing that comes to mind is a lot of vehicles, a lot of trucks, but they're projecting 90 trucks in the entire year, so the way they work, the way the company works.
What size is the building there in now?
Currently, two buildings, one 15,000 and one 30,000.
On North Dean, is what?
15,000 on North Dean, 30,000 on Auburn.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's what, they're just moving that facility over into one facility, which equals that 50,000 that we're, they're just trying to get logistics right, so. If you have any more questions?
Well, I have a question, staff, regarding this approval is based, approval, if we approve this request, then it approves the 130,000 square foot use, right?
That is correct. This is not uncommon for larger projects, especially industrial projects.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And just to clarify, the reason something like this would not go into the tech park is because it would, this is just distribution.
We do not.
My understanding is in the tech park, they provide many, many more services than
That's correct.
This business would require.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we use, have distribution facilities in our tech parks.
We do not.
That's not a use allowed by the industrial board.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask to make sure.
Okay.
It was clear.
Then, I think we need a public hearing on this one, as well as anyone wish, I'll open that public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the conditional use of 130,000 square foot warehouse distribution facility at this site? There's no one, so I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
Much to approve.
Motion's been made to approve, seconded?
Second.
Motion's been made to approve and seconded to approve. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
And so the proposal is approved. Okay.
Hello. This is a conditional use request to allow a commercial and entertainment use lounge at 157 East Magnolia Avenue. I'm sure y'all are familiar with this location between North College and North Gay. This is in the, this is the building right here and the suite is on the left side, the west side, excuse me, right along there. It is in the Urban Core and College Edge Overlay District, which is, the surrounding area is all primarily the same. The building is multi-use, multi-tenant building and the session would be a bar that has been described as a more refined, more sophisticated experience, where when you walk in the door, you'd be seated and once everyone is seated and all the seats are filled, that would be their capacity. So, you wouldn't have people standing behind you. This would be a second location with the first in Tuscaloosa. The applicant and owner is very excited to come here and staff recommends approval with no conditions for this. Are there any questions of me?
Thank you. Is there a representative of the petitioner in the audience wish to come forward and address this? Okay, there is not. This is a conditional use request, therefore, a public hearing is required. Is there, I'll open that public hearing and is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this issue? I see none, so we'll close the public hearing. And is there any further discussion among the commissioners? Motion to be made?
I move to approve CU 2022-035.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and roughly, multiply seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Billy, okay, all right.
Meet there after the meeting.
The next.
Okay, next to last is for a request for three waivers to our development and design standard requirements in the Urban Core District. This is going to be for the Auburn AC Marriott Hotel located at 100 North Gay Street and they're requesting waivers to finestration requirements, our permitted cladding materials and to adjust the minimum story height for non-ground floors. The project is a 129-room hotel. We'll have a rooftop restaurant, as well as a lounge. It's located just to the north of the new Auburn Bank Building, across the street from the Gay Street surface parking and to the west of the new City of Auburn parking deck. Here's a prox map with the surrounding zoning. Here is a rendering of the south elevation. The requested waivers here are going to be to the finestration, pretty minor. The first floor is required to have 50% of finestration and they're requesting to reduce that to 45%. The second floor is required to have 30% and they're requesting to reduce that to 25.4%. They're also asking to be allowed to use cementitious panels between the floors of the upper floors. That is not a permitted cladding material in the Urban Core. They originally proposed stucco, but the DDRC Development, Downtown Development Review Committee preferred the use of this. They're also asking for aluminum panels up on the rooftop restaurant and down on the bottom right on the canopy there. The story height for the floors, excuse me, floors two through four and floor six of the hotel, the required minimum story height for upper floors is 10 and a half feet and they're requesting to reduce that to 10 feet in order to provide more space for the rooftop restaurant. Oh, sorry. The west elevations, cementitious panels are requested between the floors. The finestration on the second floor, they're requesting to reduce from 30% to 25%. And the DDRC met twice to review these plans and on the applicant's third submittal of the plans, they accepted those under the understanding that the approved plans would include the waivers. So, we do recommend approval of these to achieve the building design that the DDRC accepted. Any questions?
Is there anyone representing the hotel that wishes to address, come forward?
Good evening, I'm Scott Allen. I'm the architect of record on the project and we just want to say it's been a great process with the DDRC. We understand the importance of the site and this building, while the renderings, the brick doesn't, is pretty red, the intent also is the brick will match the Auburn Bank Building just to the south and the metal panels referenced, the dark bronze color will also match the Auburn Bank Building and the window systems. So, we understand these are two rather large structures right there and we want those buildings to be friends and we appreciate being here this evening. I also have Mark Robbins with Ram CRE for representation of ownership. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, although the gentleman says it's public hearing, do we normally have public hearings on the waivers? If I don't mind having one, we'll open that public hearing. Does anyone wish to address these issues of waivers that have been requested? I see no one, so I'll close that public hearing and have any discussion? Anybody want to discuss, ask any more questions regarding this?
I'll say that I'm very pleased to see AC Marriott going through the DDRC and working with them, that's very much appreciated. It is a big project and it is in a very prominent location. It's a lovely hotel flag if no one has stayed in one, so I think it'll be a nice addition to the city. And with that being said, if there's no more comments, I would make a motion to approve.
Well, what I would like to do to make it neat, tidy, let's have three different motions. Approve the finestration.
Okay.
And then the waiver for the cladding and then the story height. Is that all right?
I'll start with the first one.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded that the waiver to finestration requirements be approved. And any discussion, that's motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. The motion carries. Now, the waiver for the cladding materials?
I'll make a motion to approve waiver number 2 to 2022-006. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the third waiver required regarding the minimum story heights of...
I'll make a motion to approve waiver number three, 2022-006.
Second.
Have a second? Second? Thank you, David. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the motion carries unanimously on all three. Okay. Long subdivision.
Last up is a waiver to our subdivision regulations for flag lots to allow less than 500 feet between non-adjacent flag lots on the same side of the street. The location of the property is 10812 Alabama Highway 51, which is outside of the optimal boundary. It's pretty far southwest from the existing city limits, 2.8 miles. It's just within our planned jurisdiction, 2.2 miles further to the east and we would not be reviewing the subdivision. That's Chapel Heights subdivision up to the northwest. Here's a prox map showing the distance of the subdivision from the existing city limits. And here is the subdivision plan. The applicant's requesting to subdivide two existing lots into three. The subject property is approximately six acres. Like I mentioned, the request is for, to allow less than 500 feet between non-adjacent flag lots on the same side of the street. The total distance or the frontage of the subject property is 218 feet. The total distance, or the frontage of the subject property, is 218 feet, and the proposed distance between those flag lots is 155 feet. Aldot is responsible for this section of Highway 51, and they have granted permission for the access points as proposed. Staff does recommend denial just based on application of the regulations, but we don't feel that there would be any harm to the city by approving the request.
Questions for Amber? Thank you, Amber.
Thanks.
Is there anyone representing the property owner which to comment?
Been a long time. I'm Jim Miller. It's been 1983 since the last time I came before this council. I just got out of Auburn. Problem is, this was done 50 years ago, and nobody thought about Auburn being that far out back in then. So I just politely request that we do this, because that's the only practical way I could see. The owner of the big piece here that has the existing shop on it, it's his brother, and he just wants to put a house back there. Well, he's been going through a divorce, if that makes any difference. But anyway, he's a truck driver, and he's just going to be, they're going to put a trailer back there for him to live in when he's not on the road. So that's the, that's the reason behind, I just request that you allow us this thing, because my newer lots will have a lot more room in front of them. But that's, that's the only thing, that was, this was not set up by any thought, and that's the only practical way I could do it. I'd like to have come down on the south side and made a double one, but that only left like 20-something feet between, as you can see the dimension between that house and the, there's just not practical amount of room to make a double like I normally would have. In fact, I'll probably have anyone in front of you here in a few weeks that has one, but that's why, that I had to do. There's just no practical way to do it. And the state was happy because we aren't adding any additional, we're all going to use the sink, because it's basically a swamp for all that thing, so we're all using the same drainage and everything out into that project, so we're not adding any significant amount of traffic to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this requires a public hearing also. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this particular proposal? Not being anyone, we'll close that public hearing, and any discussion among the staff? Questions of staff? I mean, of the board? Questions of the staff? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll move to approve. Yes, I move to approve 2022-007.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve the waiver request and the subdivision, and all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the motion carries. And I believe that is the last item on the agenda. Any other business that anyone wishes, the board wishes to bring up? Chairman's communication, other than I will echo, I think all of us appreciate the staff setting up a joint training meeting that will be coming 24th?
24th.
24th. I see you've already got the slides, so we can sleep during the presentation. We've already...
Those are for you to take notes on.
Okay, appreciate, appreciate you setting that up. Any staff communication, further staff communication?
Yes, sir, just two items. Just a reminder, so next month in September, the Packet Meeting will be on a Tuesday because of the holiday on Monday, so just be aware of that. On the 6th, thank you. And then, you know, about the training, you've got folders, so I think that was it. Thank you.
All right, if there's no other business, we will be...